Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I will call into open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees, August 16th at 7:05 PM. Pardon our five-minute tardiness. Thank you, everybody, for being here. As our custom, we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mrs. Mays in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
We have the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and if you would now please silence any cell phones or electronic devices that you have to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would now please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. So first on our agenda this evening is appointments. Imagine that, right before school starts, we have a few very important items of business to take care of. And I know these are ratifications. So, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Rice. I'd like to recommend the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for principal of Early College High School, CTE; principal of Hale Elementary; principal of Wimbis World Language Academy; assistant principal for Dan Diaper Career Tech Center; assistant principal for Martin; assistant principal for Sagan; assistant principals for Carter; assistant principal for Workman; assistant principal for Sherrod; and assistant principal for Sterret.
Quite a list. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rice. I move that we accept all the administrative appointments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hogg. Motion by Mr. Hibbs to approve the ratification of the administrative appointments discussed. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. The motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. Some of the ratification appointments will be at future board meetings, so we're still with previous ratifications. So I'd like to start with the new principal of the second early college high school, Dr. Ben Boland. Dr. Boland attended Texas Wesleyan University for Bachelor of Science in Mathematics; UT Arlington for Master of Ed. in Ed. Administration; UT Arlington for Doctorate in Ed. Leadership and Policy Studies; most recently, the principal of early college high school; has been a principal at Ferguson Junior High; assistant principal at Bowie; assistant principal at Bowles; has taught math at Young and at Workman. Dr. Boland, congratulations.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. Hard to believe, just four short years ago, we were opening the first early college high school in AISD, and I've been privileged to watch very shy eighth graders mature into confident college graduates and achieving things that no one in their family maybe thought they could, and others as well. So it's been an outstanding experience. A lot of that success goes in thanks to the staff at ACHS. They've been incredible to work with. They go above and beyond for students every day to form positive relationships and keep motivating them to do the impossible, so I'd like to thank them, and I know they'll continue to do great things. Many of them came out here this evening, though, so thank you to the staff at ACHS for building an incredible program and for your support. I'd also like to recognize and thank my family for their support and encouragement every day. So here this evening are my wife Kirsten, my daughters Bellin, Lily, and my father-in-law Frank. They got great seats to be on TV. So I'm looking forward to second early college high school and starting this over again with our outstanding partners at TCC to build another great program that I wish every single student in AISD had the opportunity to participate in. So I'm excited to get started, and again, thank you for this opportunity.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new principal for the Wimbis World Language Academy, Ms. Delise Hardy. Delise attended Dallas Baptist University for Bachelor of Science in Biology; UT Arlington for Master of Ed. in Ed. Leadership; most recently, the principal at Crouch Elementary; has been a principal in Grand Prairie; assistant principal at the elementary level; a math and science strategist; a bilingual dual-language teacher; and also a reading specialist. So, Delise, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you to Dr. Rice, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board. Hola, konnichiwa, bonjour, mahaban, sin chao. Hello. Four years ago, I started, I stood here excited to start as the new principal at Crouch Elementary in Arlington ISD. These years have allowed me to serve a great community of families and such dedicated staff, a few of them who are here today to continuing to show their support for my journey in this great district, and I thank them greatly for all that they do and who they are. I also thank my husband and my kids who stand by me, and they're here today, daily, and support me. I have grown so much the past few years here in Arlington, working directly with people like Tracy Brown and Dr. Ward, as well as many other great principals and leaders that I call not only colleagues but friends. Now I stand here excited to begin a new adventure as the principal of the World Language Academy. This innovative school will bring a great opportunity and new experiences to the students in Arlington ISD. I thank the ISD leadership and the board for your commitment and vision to bring this school for the families in our communities, and I'm honored to lead this work of new opportunities for students as we prepare them to be college and career-ready in a global society. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce the principal for Hale Elementary, Ms. Natasha Harris. Very nice. Natasha attended Baylor University for Bachelor of Arts in Speech; Lamar University for Master of Ed. in Ed. Leadership; most recently, the assistant principal at Hale Elementary; fourth and fifth grade teacher at Thornton; has also taught third grade and fourth grade in different districts. Natasha, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Dr. Rice, esteemed members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to be a leader in Arlington Independent School District. I first would like to give thanks and honor to God for giving me the opportunity to be who He has designed for me to be. I want to acknowledge my family members who are here, my husband, D'Artagnan, my children who support me in everything that I do, and my daughter, Taylor, who says, "I'm going to be a principal like mommy." And to my mom, who today is her birthday, and what better way to say happy birthday to your mom? So, Mom, happy birthday. To my dad, my mother-in-law, my aunt, my grandfather, grandmother, to all of my Hale Elementary family who are here to support me. And I really want to acknowledge someone very special, my super-boss, Claudia Herrera, who saw something in me, yes, who saw something in me two years ago, and she saw the leader in me that I could become, that I didn't know, that was deep inside of me. And so she helped me to grow and be the person that I am today, to now be the principal of Lynn Hale Elementary. So thank you, Claudia, for that. And I also want to just say to my Hale family, thank you for supporting me, having my back, and being there for me. I am so ready to partner with you to give our children of Lynn Hale Elementary what they deserve. I want to help you grow to be the leaders that you can be, so that we can give them those rich learning experiences, so they can be career-ready, so they can be college-ready, and so they can have a positive impact on this world. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Very, very well done. I usually don't comment after somebody speaks, but I have to say that. Yeah, so, good job.
So, Dr. Cavassos, who has to follow that?
Yeah, well, I know. No pressure here, but the new assistant principal for Arlington High School, Mr. Derek Kane. Derek attended Texas A&amp;M University. I paused just for that. Bachelor of Arts in Speech Communications; Stephen F. Austin for Master of Ed. in Ed. Leadership; most recently, worked at Clear Creek ISD as a U.S. History Coach, teacher and coach, and has also taught world geography. Derek, congratulations and welcome.
Good evening, President Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. It's an honor and a privilege to be with you tonight. Thank you very, very much. I want to start off saying that I stand before you as a K-12 product of Arlington ISD schools. That being the case, I want to first thank my teachers. The teachers I had along the way challenged and inspired me. Albert Einstein once said that "Education is not the learning of facts; it's instead the training of the mind to think." And AISD teachers embodied that in my life. They challenged me, they pushed me, and they made me into a young boy that had dreams, and I stand before you, living my dreams. So thank you. I also want to thank my family, my wife Lori, who is the best GT lead teacher I know. She's amazing. I love you. I want to thank my daughter McKinley and my unborn daughter, who's coming in October, and I want to thank the rest of my family, my parents, my in-laws, my sister, everybody for their support. But most importantly, I want to thank Arlington ISD for this opportunity. After spending more than a decade in Houston, I'm so very happy to be back in Arlington. It's good to be home. Finally, I would like to thank Dr. Dalla and the Colts family for welcoming me in with open arms. I look forward to working with a dynamic group of educators each and every day, educators that daily grow kids and challenge them and push them to be more than what they knew they could be. I'm excited to be part of the Arlington High School. Kick'em Colts.
Next, the assistant principal for Arlington High School, Ms. Vanna Shaw-Stines. Vanna attended University of Phoenix in Bachelor of Science in Information Technology; University of Phoenix, Master of Arts in Ed. Leadership; most recently, a campus testing facilitator at Arlington High School; has been a data analyst and campus testing coordinator in Fort Worth ISD; has taught sixth grade; and has also been in the United States Air Force. So, welcome, Vanna.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rice, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you so much for the opportunity to serve the students of Arlington High School, the staff, and the community. It is an honor to be chosen for this amazing opportunity and to stand before you today. How sweet it is to be in Colt Country. I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. Dalla and my excellent and incredibly supportive administrative team here with me today, and the many other administrators, teachers, testing facilitators, and support staff that have in one way or another contributed to my journey in Arlington ISD along the way. At Arlington High, our Colts family displays the highest level of commitment to owning what we do, an undeniable passion for student success, the toughest and hardest-working group of educators I've ever had the privilege to work with, and a community of compassion. I'd also like to thank the many incredible people in my former district that impacted me or inspired me through my years of data analysis and teaching, where I learned that when the going gets tough, the tough pull more data. I'd also like to thank those that served with me in the Air Force and showed me that leadership, what leadership truly looks like, and inspired me to always do better. I'd like to thank my family and friends watching from home today. And last, but certainly not least, I am incredibly thankful for my awesome, awesome husband, Chris, my son, Ethan, my daughter, Emily, and my four bonus kids, Connor, Katie, Cooper, and Kerrigan. Without their love, support, and often patience, none of this would be possible. With God and family, all things are possible. Kick'em Colts.
Next, the assistant principal for Bowie High School, Catherine Claiborne. Catherine attended the University of Texas at Austin. We'll pause for that, just, I thought we'd pause for that, too. Bachelor of Arts in Spanish; Nova Southeastern University for Master of Science in Ed. Leadership; most recently, the assistant principal at Carter Junior High School; has been a secondary ELA specialist and a ninth and 10th grade English teacher, and also a theater and Spanish teacher. Catherine, congratulations.
Thank you so much. President Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this awesome opportunity of joining Bowie High School leadership team. I met Rennie Lizardo at Carter, and he opened a door for me in AISD and now at Bowie High School. And through that door, I met Tracy Brown, who will be my mentor for years to come. I hope she knows that already. And I reconnected with Beth Hollinger from Fort Worth ISD, who also gave me this opportunity to serve at Bowie High School. And tonight, it feels like everything happens for a reason. And I'm so proud to join this team at Bowie, and I promise to pay it forward and to open doors for others as they were open for me while I continue to grow in AISD. And lastly, I want to thank my family and my fiance, Anthony, my two beautiful boys over there. They keep me honest, they have me going gray, but I wouldn't have my life any other way. Thank you very much.
Next, assistant principal for Bowie High School, Ms. Brandy Johnson. Brandy attended the University of Texas at Arlington for Bachelor of Arts in Political Science; Walden University for her Master of Ed. in Curriculum Instruction and Assessment; most recently, an assistant principal in Fort Worth ISD; has been a gifted and talented Learning Network Specialist of Programs of Choice Coordinator, and an avid journalism teacher and an avid coordinator. Brandy, congratulations.
President Rice, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, thank you for allowing me to have this exciting opportunity to not only be a leader at Bowie, but for opening doors for me to be a part of Arlington ISD. I look forward to taking advantage of the many learning opportunities that Arlington ISD offers, so that I may grow personally and professionally. I would also like to thank Beth Hollinger, Dr. Jarco, and Sarah Weeks for your continued support in my professional growth. Thank you, Mr. Lizardo, and the rest of the Bowie admin team, hi, friends, for choosing me to be a part of the best administrative team in AISD. Again, the best administrative team in AISD. Lastly, I would like to thank my lovely husband, Damian Johnson, my sons, Devon and Dash, and my mom, who's watching, hi, mommy, and other family members for your everlasting love and support. Again, thank you for this exciting opportunity, and it is greatly appreciated.
Next, assistant principal at Bowie High School, Ms. Alicia DeVall. Alicia attended Texas Wesleyan University for her Bachelor of Science in Legal Studies; Concordia University for her Master of Science in Ed. Administration; most recently, a U.S. History teacher at Carter Junior High School, and has taught Texas history as well, and has been a coach, and has also taught ninth through 12th grade history. So, Alicia, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, the board, Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for this opportunity to pay a debt that I owe to Arlington ISD. That debt started when I was a student at Thornton Elementary, where there I learned my ABCs and my 1-2-3s. Then I moved on to Carter Junior High, where I learned I had to be a student before I could be an athlete. And then it culminated at Sam Houston High School, where I learned how to have pride in education. It didn't stop there. I thought my debt was paid, but it kept going. And it happened in my husband, who also is a graduate of Sam Houston High School.
Love you, too, baby.
I love you. So Sam Houston cultivated a 24-year union between my husband and myself. It didn't stop there. Arlington ISD kept giving to me, and it did in the form of my son, who graduated from Bowie High School with dual-credit and is now a sophomore at TCC, Dathan DeVall. And it kept giving. When at Farrell Elementary, my youngest son, Lyndon DeVall, joined the choir and sung a solo during Christmas, and it brought people to tears. So Arlington ISD has cultivated and nurtured my life. The ripple effect is real. It teaches us to be passionate, it teaches us to be dedicated, and it teaches us to be committed to the real. And I want to thank Arlington ISD for giving me a real opportunity. Thank you.
I'll comment on that one, too, outstanding. They're all outstanding, by the way. Everybody's outstanding. All right. Next, assistant principal for Sam Houston High School, Mr. Jason Cojalo. Jason attended Paul Quinn University for Bachelor of Science in Business Administration; Stephen F. Austin for Master of Ed. in Ed. Leadership; most recently, the assistant principal at Workman Junior High; has also been an assistant principal at Hutch; history teacher-coach at Ausley; and history teacher-coach at Carter Junior High. Jason, congratulations.
Thank you. President Rice, Dr. Cavassos, and distinguished board members, I would like to say thank you for this opportunity. I would like to start by saying there are many individuals that have encouraged my professional growth, both professionally and personally, and I would like to take this opportunity to recognize those individuals. I would like to begin by recognizing my support system. I would like to thank my mother and father for instilling in me a hard-work ethic and pushing me to be the very best that I can be. I would like to recognize my better half, my wife Veronica, for always being by my side and continuously encouraging me to strive for excellence in all that I do. I'm sure that they're here today, Ms. Acosta and Ms. McLendon. I would like to thank you for modeling what true leadership looks like and always providing me with the words of encouragement. Ms. Lopez, I would like to thank you for always challenging my leadership and professional growth. Next, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Tracy Brown for the words of encouragement and your leadership that provided our AP cohort with effective training and hands-on work that challenged not only our thinking, but focused on our professional growth. And now, Mr. Benevides and Ms. Orozco, thank you for providing me with the opportunity to continue to work with our community and our students. I have been blessed to work with the SAM network for many years, and I am very excited to continue to work with our students as we strive to ensure educational excellence for all students. Thank you. Go Texans.
All right. Good job. That's it?
That's it for tonight.
That's it? Okay. Well, I want to say again, congratulations to each and every one of you. It is, I think, a testimony by just the brief welcoming remarks that each one of you just presented to us, that leadership is on fire at AISD. Congratulations again, everybody. We have a custom where we'll ask for you to follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby, maybe? Are we doing the lobby? Are we doing the hallway? Wherever he tells you to go, we'll follow. So that we have the opportunity to personally welcome you and thank you. For the audience, if you would, please indulge the board to allow us to go first, so that after a brief recess, we can come right back in here and get back to business, and you all can celebrate and party and go home. But you're more than welcome to stay here for the meeting, if you like. Okay, so with that, it is 7:28. We'll say by 7:45, we'll come back after, what's that? 7:40. We have a lobby for 7:40. Tried that last time, and it ended up five more minutes. So, okay, we'll say a 10-minute recess. Thank you very much. Time is 7:44. Back from our recess. Next on our agenda is a public hearing. We don't have one, so we come to the open forum for agenda items portion. I do not have any cards. Is that correct, Ms. Benjamin? All right. So we'll move on to action items. We have one action item tonight, Considered Ordinance Number 138, Setting the 2018 Tax Rate. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening, we have a brief presentation on the setting of the 2018 tax rate.
Recall that in June, on June 21st, the board actually adopted a budget for the 2018-19 school year, and so now we need to complete that budget process, and that involves adopting the tax rate to fund the budget. Our fiscal year begins on July 1st each year, and state law requires that we adopt a budget before the fiscal year begins. We do not get certified property values until July 25th, and so we come back to the board once we get those values to actually ask that the board adopt the rate to fund the budget. The budget was prepared based on estimates, our estimates, of what we thought the certified values would be. So we do have now our certified values from Tarrant Appraisal District. The 2018 values were certified at a little over $28.6 billion. That is a 9.6% increase in value over last year's certified values. When we prepared the budget, we had estimated that values would be up 7.1%. This bar chart simply shows our history of property values over the last 10 years, and you can see that we have been climbing since the 2010 year. We are proposing a rate of 1.36867. That's actually comprised of two separate rates. Our maintenance and operations rate is the rate that funds just the day-to-day cost of running the school district, and then the debt service rate is the rate that we levy to generate taxes to pay the principal and interest on bonded debt that is owed just in this one upcoming year. We came to the board in June, and we proposed this rate, the $1.36867, and then turned around and published that proposed rate in a notice that we're required to put in the newspaper each year. We had a hearing then on June 21st on this proposed rate and on the budget. So once we apply the certified values through our revenue models, the certified values, since they are a little bit higher than what we use when we prepare the budget, will generate another $7.2 million in revenue. And you can see that that actually, the certified values actually have an impact on tax revenues and also state aid, and then also our TIF revenue and TIF expense. So these are the accounts, the particular line items in our budget, that are affected by property values. So again, the certified values will generate about $7.2 million more than we have in the budget that's already been adopted. This slide is simply a summary that shows total revenues and expenses and our budgeted surplus, or deficit in this case, and compares that with what the budget would look like if it had been adopted with the certified values instead. So the budget that was adopted by the board in June had a $38.7 million budget deficit. If nothing else changes about that, except... If nothing else changes about that, except the impact of our certified property values, instead of having a $38.7 million deficit, we would have a $31.5 million deficit. On the debt service side, we levy a tax strictly to pay the principal and interest that is due in the upcoming year. You'll also recall that in June, the Board authorized and ordered the sale of the final series of bonds from the 2014 bond election. And so with the debt that is owed just in this upcoming year on those bonds, we are recommending that the tax rate remain the same, the 32.867 cents in this case, and that rate will generate the dollars that we need to pay our principal and interest on this upcoming year. And so that is, again, there's no change in this rate from last year. So the next steps then would be, for tonight, we would propose again that the Board consider approving the rate of 1.36867. Again, that's comprised of two parts, maintenance and operations rate of $1.04, and then the debt service rate of 32.867 cents. And then we will continue to monitor our entire budget, as we do every year, and we come to the Board in spring with one interim budget amendment that adjusts things, both revenues and expenditures for major occurrences during the year. And if we still deem that appropriate, then we would recommend an adjustment to the tax collections and state aid for the impact of certified values at that time. So, the motion that you will make this evening is actually prescribed by law, the wording of it, and I put it on the slide here. It is, it's a little confusing to people because very clearly, we are not changing our tax rate, but the law requires that we use this particular language because the rate that we are considering tonight will generate more real tax revenue than it did last year, the same rate. I will point out that the hard thing to explain to people is that for school districts, there are two main sources of revenue, property taxes and state aid, and they work together. As our property values go up, our state aid goes down. So while we talk about generating more tax revenues, because certified property values are higher, those certified values will impact our state aid. And so I just point that out, but this language is prescribed, so even though we are not recommending a change in the rate, the language does indicate that effectively it represents a 6.6% increase. That, we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. This is an action item. I would be entertaining a motion, and of course, any discussion that trustees may have. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rice, and before I actually enter in the motion, I would like to highlight the specifics of your presentation. First and foremost, what we're looking at the tax rate this year being 1.36867 is what we had this last year.
Correct.
But what happened is in, with the property values having an increase of 9.62% increase, that actually equated to just a little bit more than a $7 million increase of what the district will receive through property taxes. Correct?
That is, the $7.1 million is the additional revenue beyond what we had already built into the budget.
Correct.
We had assumed and built into the budget that rates would go up 7.1%. They've actually gone up the 9.6%, and so that additional $7 million is what we'll recognize because the certified values were actually higher than we had even estimated.
Correct. Okay. So, but the important point behind that is when those dollars come in, they're actually taken away from the state aid that we receive as a district.
Yes, and state aid gets real complex. It uses last year's property values. Our values have been rising over several years, and so there's a one-year lag on when it actually reduces your state aid, but yes, higher values have the effect of lowering your state aid.
Yeah, so there shouldn't be this illusion, I want to say, that we are receiving many more dollars.
Right.
Because we're actually, it's going to catch up with us on the state aid side.
Right, right. There's a little piece of this that does affect state aid in the current year. The bigger impact comes the following year.
Okay. And so just to be clear, that's what I want to do, is just be clear. What the citizens are actually going to see is that the effective tax rate is actually the same as what we had this last year, but hopefully that explains that with more revenues because of the percent increase, those dollars will come in, but on the back end, we're getting penalized by the state, in my view. So with that, President Rice, I want to move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.36867, which is effectively a 6.66% increase in the tax rate.
Very good. So we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs.
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Fowler. Have a little bit of discussion. Mr. Hogg?
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Ms. Powell, thank you for understanding state system. A lot of us up here, myself 10 years, some of the others 9 years, so we've spent a lot of time. We feel like we're pretty knowledgeable, but school finance is never easy. So a lot of people in the public like to talk about effective tax rates. We have two worlds of taxes, MNO and INS. In MNO, the school districts, there's really not an effective tax rate because we get a bump in year one, but then the formulas catch up with us.
Correct.
Correct? So when we talk effective tax rate, you're not really talking MNO taxes. Is that a fair statement?
The effective rate is a calculation that should tell you what you would earn this year on properties that were taxed both this year and last year. So it's more about the revenue.
Right.
Than is the rate.
But with INS, there is, in essence, an effective tax rate, to say the least, which I think we all agree, but the voters in 2014 approved this bond, correct?
Correct.
And so with that taxable value increase, if we didn't, if we kept the effective tax rate, we, in essence, if we hadn't received the increase in values, we probably would be increasing that rate. Is that a fair assumption?
That is.
So what it does, because the values have gone up, it allows us to be able to keep that tax rate at the same dollar value instead of increasing those dollar values.
That's correct.
And Ms. Powell, where do we rank in the comparison districts on our tax rate?
In looking just at, if we look at the districts around us and the districts we consider our comparison districts, we are, I believe it's about 12 out of, I think there are 17 listed here, roughly.
And everything I've seen, even when we do comparisons, and that's districts from around the state that are similar to us, that we compare everything we do on, and then our surrounding districts, but then if you start comparing Dallas and all those, we're usually 4th, 5th, 3rd, right around there in the lowest tax rate from overall functioning. So I commend this Board for doing that. On the same note, we know what financial situations we face, so I look forward to our work session on those. I thank you for the tax rate. You know, for many years, I think the very first time, especially some of our new colleagues, the way you have to read that tax rate, it's always interesting from that value, but I think we always have to remember the MNO and INS, and too many people in the public don't fully understand the two portions of tax and how they work, and that those values, yes, they have gone up, and we are collecting more, but it keeps us from increasing the actual rate value because of that increase. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and I think those are excellent points that we have to continuously put forth to the public, to educate the public and educate our legislators, because I believe there's many that don't understand that. I think our local delegation does because of you and other members of this Board and the district, to let them know that those dollars don't all come through Arlington ISD, and here's what the tax rate is for the school districts versus a municipality or a county entity. And we have a lot more advocacy to do and more explaining for people to understand that when they get that tax bill, property tax bill, and they see that number for Arlington ISD, that doesn't all go to Arlington ISD, and more of a burden ends up on us as local payers versus what the state share is. So I appreciate those points. Those are definitely things that we have to keep discussing into the future. So we have a motion on the table to approve the recommended tax rate. I don't see any other lights indicating further discussion, so please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, and thank you very much, Ms. Powell. Moving on, the next item is our discussion-action portion of the meeting, and the only item there is the Board of Trustees Handbook. Mr. Hogg?
There we go. I'm live. Thank you, as well, Scotty, Dr. Kavasos. Dr. Rice, also thank you, Dr. Kavasos, for that. With this to the Board, tonight, we are not taking motion on the Board Handbook, but we would let the Board know, you should have electronic copy. If you need a printed copy, please feel free to ask myself or Ms. Benjamin, so then two weeks, we can bring this back. As you'll remember, in October, November, I can't remember exactly when we went through, Justin's trying to remember, October-ish, November-ish? We're close, right, on those days. We did an extensive evaluation of our Board Handbook, made lots of changes. Thanks to a lot of work Mr. Chapa and Ms. Walton and myself put in, especially Mr. Chapa from a legal mindset, to help us try and make the Board Handbook a little more succinct, link in and have some language that a bunch of non-lawyers wrote up that helps out. So we truly appreciate it. We feel like we've made this Board Handbook a little more, I don't want to say condensed, but covering the right pieces, hit the right goals of what we're tackling. As you can see from the Board Handbook, we're still running last year's model, so we're updating, we're asking all pictures to be updated, just kind of a little quick refresh. But from the Board Governance Committee, as we're still reviewing, we don't see any major changes that we're going to be making on recommendations, addressing changes like we kind of made in October where there's lots of review. But we do want the rest of the Board to have time. If anything you change, update your profiles, your bios, little short bios that are in there, so that we all understand the rules and process that we as a Board set upon ourselves to be able to follow. So if you need a hard copy, let Ms. Benjamin know. Otherwise, Dr. Rice, we would propose, we're bringing this back in two weeks for action with no major changes, but there may be some slight changes that'll be sent out to the Board with plenty of time. So I would ask everyone to get those to Ms. Benjamin or myself for any of the changes in the next week or so. That's it.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and to the Governance Committee in advance for going through this updating process. So I don't see any lights indicating questions for you, so we will move on to the next item, which is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Any trustees have items they wish to be withdrawn from the consent? All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to consent, and there's several items there. It's a larger list. Ms. Powell, would you please share any bids?
Those Rice Board members, Dr. Kavasos, we have seven bids on the consent agenda this evening, and in all cases, we recommend the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept consent? Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Rice, I move that we accept consent, the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Hibbs, a second by Ms. Walton, to approve consent agenda. Don't see any lights indicating discussion. Please vote. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Powell. All right, now on to our discussion item this evening, which is the Accountability Update. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Rice, and this evening we'd like to bring some information about our accountability results, also kind of refresh everyone's memory about the system as it is one that tends to be really, really complex, so I'm sure Dr. Barlow will help us understand it all. I do want to just share with everyone that with these results, it's still something that we're examining and analyzing, the actual results and the student performance. And, you know, I've said it before, and I'll probably say it at some point as well, is that, you know, one state test is an important part of information that we have for our students and their progress, but it certainly does not represent learning that they do all year. And so that continues to be something that I think we have to remain focused on, is that one standardized test, while it provides important information, does not accurately represent the essence of teaching and learning. So with that, I'll have Dr. Barlow share with us the A through F Accountability Update in the system, and turn it over to him.
Sure, thank you. Well, good evening, President Rice, members of the Board, and Dr. Kavasos. So thank you for having a few minutes to spend with me this evening, talking about a little bit of accountability for this year. It's been quite the busy summer. I think as we go through some of those slides, we'll kind of see what that means and kind of how busy it's been. So we'll go ahead and get started here. So a lot of the slides that we have tonight are a little bit of a preview from June, just kind of a refresher of the way the system's built, some of the changes that have been made throughout the summer, and then also some of the decisions that have been made throughout the summer. So you may remember back, I think in June, there were still some decisions left, open-ended. We didn't know exactly how things were going to operate. Not only did those decisions finally get made, some at the very last minute, some even after the last minute, I'll explain that in a minute, but there were also other decisions that just kind of changed as we went throughout the summer, so I'll try to touch on some of those here in a minute. So the basic breakdown of the new system is you have these three domains, and you have the first domain there is the Student Achievement. The second domain is School Progress, where Part A is Student Growth and Part B a Relative Performance, and then that third domain is Closing the Gaps. And you'll see the notes there at the bottom is that the only entities, whether it's campuses or campuses or districts, but the only ones that actually received a letter grade technically this year was the districts. And so campuses get the met or improvement required, although at the last minute, another change, they decided to go ahead and list all of the scores with the campuses, so you can pretty much see what they made as far as the letter grade. So that's a change that was made at the last minute that wasn't anticipated, so a little bit of challenge over that. But as far as the official accountability rating, the campuses will get a met or improvement required. So basically, what we really want to be more invested in, or more vested in, is just all of our data as a whole with respect to continuous improvement. So we have a little slide here, I think we've shown this a couple of times in the past, but basically, we want to make sure that we're taking whatever data is available to us, whether it's test scores or other data that we have. We have a lot of survey data that we're actually processing from last year that we'll be presenting here in a few weeks, whether it's survey data, classroom grades, test scores, whatever those data may be, and then using those data to actually continuously improve our processes and our systems. And so I think as, for an example, out of our department, we're really looking at all of our data from different viewpoints with respect to different models that can really dig down and kind of find those high leverage points that we can actually make a difference with how students are performing at schools and their outcomes that they have when they graduate. So here's just kind of a quick diagram here, is we have a lot of data now with respect to our school district and just various surveys and so forth, but we have a combination of quantitative and qualitative data. Typically, when we look at quantitative and qualitative, what we like to do is we'll use some quantitative data to kind of figure out what's happening, and then we use some qualitative data to find out why it's happening. So for example, if we're looking at some low measure somewhere with respect to quantitatively, then we want to dig down into that a little bit with respect to qualitative data, maybe with student interviews or teacher interviews, et cetera, on the campus. Kind of dig down a little bit and find out exactly why those data are like they are, and it could be any data, not just test scores. Then, once we have those data and we leverage them, then we try to make some adjustments so that we can have maximum student impact. So let's go a little bit into the Student Achievement domain. We'll get into some of these slides that we went over back in June. So Domain 1 basically measures the achievement level of students, similar to the previous system's Index 1. The key difference is that in how it's measured, it actually includes multiple achievement levels, giving various credits for each. Got a couple of examples of those here in a couple of slides, but basically, it's more than just a than just that they pass a test. There are several different standards there, the MEETS and the MASTERS, which are a little bit higher level standard. Take all of those, put those together, average them, and then you get the Domain One score. So I say the Domain One score, you get the star component of the Domain One score. So you'll see here, that star component you have at the elementary and middle schools that counts as 100%. So in that particular domain component, it's totally based off a star for elementarys and middle schools. When you get to high schools in the district, then that star component is also combined with that college and career, military readiness, and then the graduation rate. And you can see the breakdown there at the high schools in the district where the star is 40%, CCMR is 40%, and the graduation rate is the 20%. So when we look at the student achievement domain, basically, you have one point is given for each percentage of assessment results that are each one of these grade levels, or I'm sorry, standards, approaches, meets, and masters. So basically, approaches is passing, meets is a little bit higher, and then masters is a little bit higher than that. So to basically take all three of those and then average them, and that's going to be the star component of the Domain One score. The CCMR component, this is pretty much the same slide as we looked at back in June, there may be a few differences here, but you have that college readiness, you can see those on the left side, and the examples of those would be whether they meet criteria of a three on an AP or four on an IB exam, TSI scores that could include their SAT, ACT, TSI, a college prep course, both in the reading and the mathematics, completing dual credit hours, earning an associate's degree, completing an on-ramps course, which I believe that's coming in next year, not this year, and then meet standards on a composite indicators indicating college readiness. So there's still kind of some ambiguous there, ambiguity there with respect to college readiness and some other standards that may actually indicate that. The career ready component there on the right side, CTE, coherent sequence of coursework. So this has been really a focus over the last several years, but in the new system, it actually phases out. So there again, the rule kind of changes there midstream. Everybody's kind of focused on that coherent sequence of courses, and now all of a sudden it's kind of changing, kind of caught everybody off guard a little bit there. But basically, now the focus is on those industry-based certifications. So how many students are getting into the, or earning an industry-based certification through CTE and other avenues? But the focus is really on the certifications. And then you also have the graduates who completed an IEP, being admitted to post-secondary industry certification programs, a little bit different than the certification itself. And then that last piece, the military piece, students that enlisted in the military. So that gets a little bit challenging in that, how do we understand who is enlisting in the military? So part of that challenge with respect to getting those data is that the military won't necessarily give you the list of students that are enlisting. That's a military situation where they won't give you the list, and so you have to kind of ask students, are they planning on enlisting? So it's a little bit of a soft data point there with respect to understanding who's going into the military. Moving on, the CCMR, basically, one point is given for each annual graduate who accomplishes one of those, so you don't have to have all of them, you just have to have one of them. The CTE component that I mentioned, I think it's highlighted in red, that's actually not a full point there, but a half point, but you do get some sort of credit with that. But you take all those points and then just divide by the number of 2017 annual graduates. And that gives you your CCMR component score. Graduation rates, this didn't change that much, it's very similar to what we had in the past. Maybe the biggest change there is that they're also including the six-year graduation rate. In the previous system, you took the higher of the four-year or the five-year, and the new system, you take the higher of the four-year, five-year, or six-year. So that was a little bit of an advantage that we got out of the graduation component this year. So then just kind of circling back around to that first slide, here's the breakdown again. Elementarys is all 100% star, and then when you get to the high schools, you have the 40% star, the 40% CCMR, and then the graduation rate is the 20%. So moving on to student progress domain, so now we're in the second domain, has two components to it. The first component is student growth, so this is student by student. Did they have some sort of growth? And I'll show you the matrix here for that in a minute, certainly not going to go through each one of the cells, but there's a matrix that kind of determines that, how much growth you get credit for there. And then the relative performance, it's basically, you're comparing your district or campus to other like districts or campuses, and are you basically being competitive with those like campuses in the way you're scoring on the test? And so kind of dig into those components. So the elementary, middle, and high school, or actually in all of those, the higher scale score, part A, student growth, or part B, that's the relative performance, that's what's used in that domain. And I'll kind of actually give an example, we'll go through the actual district score here in a minute, I think that'll make a little bit more sense. But basically, you have the two parts, you don't use both parts, you just use the higher of the two parts. On the student growth part, just a little bit more information on that, that student growth includes all assessments with a star progress measure, so basically, there's a student making progress, and so it's actually a student by student comparison. So in order to actually calculate that, you have to have scores for that student from both years, and that, and then you just compare those, are they making some sort of progress, and then you get credit or a half a credit, et cetera, depending on the matrix. And I think I have the matrix on this next slide there. So certainly not going to go through the full matrix here, but you can see the, kind of the way that works as you look at the left-hand side, as far as where did the student perform last year, and kind of scan across the top, where did the student perform this year, and then depending on which cell they land in, then you may get a full credit, you may get a half credit, et cetera, with respect to the progress that this student made. Also included in that is the STAR Alt Two test as well, so there's the matrix for that one. Then we get into that part B, that relative performance. And so really, the best way to kind of explain that or to show that is this diagram here, I think this is the Mokey C diagram that was in one of their handouts or one of their projects that they did. So basically, the way this works is if you look at this left side, and I'll see if I can use this laser pointer here on this one, if you're looking at this left, the left axis, the vertical axis here, that's basically going to be the level of performance on Domain One. So did you have 50% in Domain One, did you have 70%, 80%, et cetera? And then you look at the horizontal axis here, this X-axis here, that's going to be the percent economically disadvantaged for the district or the campus. So basically, the way that works is, there's so much research that indicates that the more economically disadvantaged students that you have on a campus or a district, the higher the percentage, then the more challenging it is and the lower the test scores. And so they're trying to do there is adjust for that. So over here on this left side, you can probably see these blue dots up here in the upper left. These are districts that have lower percentages of SAS, low SAS students. And so you can see that the expectation for their score is much higher here. So you look at the trend line here, and if you're, I think I've got that on the trend line there, if you're above that trend line, then you're going to get a higher grade, a B or an A. If you're below that trend line, then you're going to end up with a D or an F, a lower grade. If you're right on it, kind of in that region, then you're going to end up with a C. So you can see that they're trying to make an adjustment there, just kind of trend down here, that as you get to districts that have high percentages of low SES, 95%, et cetera, then that trend line kind of comes down a little bit to where it kind of makes that adjustment, so you're not being compared to those districts on the left side of the graph there. Okay, keep moving on here. So basically, in the start of school progress domain, for elementary schools, then you have that student achievement score that's going to be compared to economic disadvantage, and then for your middle schools, the same, but then when you get to the high schools, you also include the CCMR component with that. So let's go to closing the gaps domain. So this is Domain Three, so now we're on the last domain, and then we'll kind of bring them all together here in a minute. Domain Three compares the performance of each student group to a standard in each one of those component areas. And basically, now we're focused on, did you meet the standard or not in each one of those areas? So when you get to the final calculations, what we're actually counting in the final calculations is Ys and Ns, yeses and nos, and I'll give an example of that here in a minute. But basically, before we get to the example, so basically, you have student groups that you're looking at, and then you have areas that are measured or components. So you look at all those student groups on the left side there, you have all students, African-American, Hispanic, we're very used to some of those that were in the previous system, but when you get to maybe the lower half of that, you get down to where you have current and formal special education students, current and monitored ELL students, going up to the third and fourth year of being monitored, and then also continuously enrolled and non-continuously enrolled. We haven't seen those components in the system in previous years. Then you have the components on the right side there, where you have academic growth, I'm sorry, academic achievement, growth in reading and math, graduation rates, again, CCMR comes into the system again there, student achievement, Domain One is kind of a quality piece there, and then that English language proficiency status. So basically, you're taking the left side, multiply it times the right side, that's all the number of different components that you could be measured on in Domain Three. It's like 70 or 80 different components. I'll show a table here on the next slide. Looking at student groups, how did they come, how did they come rate, or how did they achieve in each one of those components on the right side? So this is what it looks like when you look at all the cells together. So certainly, I'm not going to go through each cell, and you might not be able to read, it's kind of small because we're trying to put it all onto the, put it all onto the slide there, but I'm just going to go through a couple of them here. So this first one here is part of the academic achievement, and so you can see you have reading, and then you have all students, you have African-American, you have Hispanic. And then what you'll also notice, what we have here is, these are not our scores, these are the targets for each one of those areas. You'll notice that there's a different target for each one of those areas. So once you meet that target, then you get a yes. So let me give you an example. If I come over here to say, to say special ed, and that target there is 19%, so once I hit that 19%, then I get a yes there. I can get 50% or 75% or 100%, I still get a yes, and that's all I get out of that. So the way that works is, I just have to hit the target in order to get credit for that particular cell. So you can see all of the cells here, you go down to the next one, you have academic growth, again, you have reading, math, and then you have all the different student groups, you have a graduation rate, it works the same way, you have the student achievement, that quality piece, the same way, and then CCMR. The part I want to spend just a minute on is this last component here. Notice that last line, I could barely get it on this slide there, the English language proficiency status. So this is one of those big things that changed over the summer. I think when we were visiting back in June, this is part of that USDA waiver that we were waiting on to either be denied or accepted, well, it was denied. And so the original thought was, the way TEA was going to process that was that they would not include the ELP, that bottom component, if it was, if it was accepted, that was what they were actually asking for, and they would just spread that 10% out over the other three domains or those other three components. That particular component actually counts 10% of Domain Three. And notice, there's only one group on there. You hit the 42% and you get those 10 points, you don't hit the 42% and you don't get those 10 points. So it's all or nothing on that one. So you see on the other areas, you have different student groups, on that last one, you only have the one area, and you either get it or you don't, you get the 10 points or you don't get the 10 points. I'll show on the next slide or two how that actually factors in. But that was one that changed at the last minute, and not only did it change at the last minute, but those data that go into that particular component don't exist for 2017, 18. So they actually had to go back, TEA went back and used data from 2016, 17. So those data, actually, all of that happened before this new system was even signed into law. So that really kind of creates some challenges with respect to how that operated, because those are old data with respect to what happened back in 2016, 17. I'll make another note there that the CCMR component, I forgot to mention this a while ago, but the CCMR component is the same thing. So everything I've talked about a while ago on CCMR, all of that went back to the 2016, 17 school year, because you may have noticed that that's, I said 2017 graduates, not 2018 graduates. So all of those data were 2016, 17 data that went back to the 2017 graduates. That was stuff that happened before the system ever was actually, you know, put into play. Makes it quite challenging as far as trying to actually meet those objectives and perform well within the system. So I think the next slide, I have a little bit better breakdown. So when you get into the actual closing the gaps, you notice I had those sections, I had those banded sections on the, on the chart there. So the academic achievement part counts 30%, the star growth status counts 50%, that yield peak component, that's the 10%, that's the part that I was just describing with the one student group, the 42% and so forth. And then the student achievement domain score, star component only, as a quality component is 10%. That is for elementary, middles, and then when you get to high schools and districts, you kind of trade out a couple of components there, you add that federal graduation status, and then the CCMR. Basically, it works the same way, you just have two different components you trade out there for, for the system there. Okay, so then we get into ratings. So basically, once you have your raw component score, so you do the average on the Domain One as indicated a while ago, then that gives you a raw component score, but then you have to translate that into a scale score. So here's another complication as far as just how the system works, is having that raw score is not the actual final score, then you got to go through a transformation there. And so the way that works, I have a slide here, I think I had a version of this slide back in June, but we've kind of improved upon a little bit. So the left side there is just an example of way scores may work. I may have a raw score, say on Domain One, of a 62, that may equate to a 91. Or I may have a raw score there on Domain One of a 51, and that may equate to a 79. So these are just kind of examples of how that may work. They actually go into a formula, and you'll see the formula there on the right side. So each one of those scores then have to go through the formula, then you calculate the scale score, the scale score is what actually shows up on the report card or the, or the rating system. So just a little bit of example of the way that's scaled there. I keep moving. So then we get to our particular scores here in Arlington. So these are the data that went with our district, and you see the components there, you'll see this is Domain One, this first line, student achievement domain, the second line, part A of the student progress, or school progress, and then you have part B, that's going to be the relative performance, and then you have the closing the gaps. So the way the manual explains this is a little bit complicated, so the easiest way to think about it is, when I look at those three scores right there, the 73, the 80, and the 79, you take the highest of those three scores. In our case, it was an 80. So that 80 is going to be moved over to the 70% and multiply it times the 70%. So you get three shots there, take the highest, ours was 80, multiply that times the 70%, that gives me the 56.0. The last one there, the closing the gaps, you only have that one area, that's what you get. You don't have a choice there amongst other components. So you get the 73 in our case, multiply it times the 30%, that gives you the 21.9, which gives you the 78, and you can see for our district that lands on a C. So that's kind of how the score is calculated, when you get all of the data in, you do all the scaling, it comes down to this, this table right here as far as the way it's calculated for the final score. So kind of moving forward, I'm not going to go through all the details on these slides. Basically, as indicated earlier, is that districts will get the A, B, C, D, or F, campuses are supposed to get just the met or improvement required. One piece there on the campuses, though, is basically, if you made that 60 or below, which would be basically an F, that's how it's determined that you're improvement required. So that part is pretty explicit in the manual. If you made that, I'm sorry, not 60 or below, but below 60, then that's what would be equate to an F, that also equates to improvement required for the campuses. Let's skip that slide there. Basically, this is, again, back in June, we talked about this a little bit, a lot of this has already happened. The cut scores for districts and campuses reflect high expectations for student achievement, student growth, and reducing achievement gaps among students. An effort is being made, or has been made, it's already completed now, is to establish A cut scores equating high achievement and C cut scores equating average achievement. The rationale of these thresholds is consistent for overall cut scores and across each domain, and additional information about cut scores in look-up tables is expected, although we've already gotten the manual, so we have those in the manual now. Those are TEA bullets, those aren't my bullets, just to make a comment there. So now we get into all the changes that happened over the summertime. So as we discussed this with respect to preparing the PowerPoint, we wanted to just maybe show a little bit of the challenges over the summertime, and I've got about three slides here, I think, of all the things that happened over the summertime. And I brought, actually, have some of my staff here, my research staff here, so I'll make a quick note here, I've got Dr. Natalie Lopez, Mark Taylor, and Dr. Peggy Porterfield. I could not have done and processed all these changes without them. They did a marvelous job this summer with respect to going through each one of these changes. We actually had changes happening after we got the first set of data on 2C, what, a week ago? We thought we had the data, they're processing it, we're going through, we're making sure that all of our data came out like we thought it was, although we had some discrepancies there. We're starting to talk to principals, and then that night, they sent more data. And so then we had to call principals back, and in one particular principal or one particular campus, the data that we had in the afternoon, we thought that campus had actually made met standard, called the principal, told them they made met standard, and then that night, we got new data, had to call the principal back the next day and say, no, we're sorry, you actually are improvement required instead of met standard. So that's part of the frustration with all of the changes that happened over the summertime. So I'm just going to kind of hit some of the highlights here. We had corrections on the scaling formula, we had rule changes, so we kind of noted here where there was a rule change, clarification, or data change. The rule change there, this was quite significant for us as far as the ET, those ETS glitches, probably, I think we've talked about that some, you probably heard about it, you know, just throughout the news and so forth, with ETS has some computer glitches, and basically... And basically what they did is that if they had a computer glitch, they just took all of the scores out of the system. And so for us, that amounted to nine hundred and ninety-two, uh, scores or tests. However, you'll note the, see the note there that a hundred and fifty-seven of those were actually passing. We believe that there's two of those scores that may help spear out, which is one of our, uh, our campuses with these projections. Uh, so we're investigating that a little bit further, looking at possible appeal of those two scores and see where we land there. We can ask for anything, you know, they may still, uh, reject it. But, um, so clarification, uh, constantly on the phone all summer long, uh, asking for clarification on rules. Uh, because, just because it's in the manual, then you get into a situation where thinking, well, no, we've got a situation that doesn't fit this. And so you got to call, get clarification on it. Uh, data changes, you'll see, uh, that last bullet there, the significance there is that, uh, those are stars, or those are scores that we get from ETS with respect to tests and test scores. But you'll see in the parentheses there, we had as many as seven times that we got updates on some of those scores. And so we run our analysis, we're starting to talk to senior staff and principals. And then the next day we get a new data set. And so then we run the analysis again and try to update whatever information that we have with respect to senior staff and principals as they're making decisions, because they're trying to make decisions over the summer with respect to the next school year. Um, CCMR data, we got a new CCMR data file, uh, I think the day of, like a couple hours right before the ratings were released, uh, a week ago, last Tuesday on TES. Uh, here's one that I thought was really interesting is you saw that chart with all the student groups. And by statute, you're supposed to include all the student groups. Excludes, uh, the continuously improved, I'm sorry, continuously enrolled, non-continuously enrolled and former special ed. We're talking to TEA on some other, one of, uh, the pieces of data and trying to do the calculation. And they just told us, oh no, we've decided we're just excluding those. And so then we start to pull those, start out of the, had to start pulling those out of the data. But the rule change there was just kind of seemed just, uh, you know, spurious as far as just all of a sudden there was a rule change there. Um, and it seemed to be a little bit in contradiction to statute. So I'm not sure exactly how that was, uh, how that was justified. Um, kind of skipped through, didn't want to go through all of them. Another one that kind of caught us off guard, it didn't affect us, but I'm sure it affected somebody throughout the state, is that, that top one there where, um, if you had three out of the four areas, so there's three domains, but that one has the two, so basically four areas. But if you had, um, three out of the four areas where you had an F on it, then the highest score that you can make on your overall score is a fifty-nine, which would be an F. Doesn't matter what's, how high that third, or I'm sorry, how high that fourth score was. You could actually ended up with a sixty-five or seventy overall. But then you would have been lower to a fifty-nine if you had three out of the four areas that were an F. So that one I believe caught, uh, most everybody off guard. It seemed, again, seemed contradictory to, uh, statute. Um, not sure exactly how that was, how that was justified and, and worked through. Um, I think I'll end the changes on there. I mean, several of them, I'm not going to go through all of them, but just wanted to kind of let you know how that happened over the summer. Um, oh, no, the slide, there's four slides, I'm sorry. Four slides, not three. Okay, so then, uh, we did want to try to do some sort of comparison to, um, to last year. This became a little bit difficult just because so many rules changes and so many changes happened with, uh, the, uh, the testing and so forth. But here's the best, here was our best bet as far as, or best calculation as far as if we were looking at the old index system. So last year we were under the index system that's on the left side here. And then on the right side here, we're on the domain system. If we look at two thousand seventeen under the previous system, you can see the data values there. And then we actually calculated that for two thousand eighteen data, even though we're not under that system. And then really what I want to focus on is that bottom line there, the change. And so we actually calculate a little bit of a change or a little bit of an increase in each one of those areas except for index two. If you come over to the domain, so this is the new system. Again, two thousand seventeen is on the top and then two thousand eighteen is on, uh, the second line there. And again, if you just look at the changes on the third line, you have, uh, increases on domain two B and domain three. And a really hefty increase there on domain three of ten points with the overall being three. So those are our best estimates if the last year was under this year's system or this year's data was under last year's system. So just trying to get some sort of a comparison from one year to the next. And then one example here, uh, I referred to this a little bit earlier with respect to approaches, meets, and masters. And so as we're having conversations about, okay, so as we move into next year or this current year, then what are some levers that we can, uh, push or pull in order to increase our rating? So one way to look at that is, we'll start with this first column here. So one way to look at that is we have the three levels. You have approaches, meets, and masters. These are the three levels that you average together to get to domain one. This is what people think of as far as passing. We, we consider that as passing if they meet that approach's score. So, uh, that would be the old kind of you pass the test, you know, type of standard. But notice, you could have a hundred percent, you could have every student in the district pass or meet that approach's standard, the hundred percent there. But by the time you average that and then you scale it, you end up with a fifty-eight as far as domain one. So you could have every student pass in the district according to that approach's standard and you would still end up with an F in that domain. So if we have a focus, then one of our, uh, part of that focus should be we have to get students to this meets level. So this is an example, if I had a hundred percent, uh, approaches, thirty percent meets, and say ten percent masters, which is a little bit higher, that would scale to a seventy-five. Going to the third example, a hundred percent meat, uh, approaches, fifty percent meets, and then thirty percent masters, then that would scale to a ninety. So just trying to give kind of an example that it's not just about passing the test. Now you have to have students performing at those higher levels or you're still going to end up with the, in this example, a fifty-eight. Uh, so it's a little bit of a challenge there, maybe a focus as we move forward. Okay, we'll go through distinctions, uh, pretty quickly here. Um, distinctions are basically the same categories. I think we had these, this slide in, back in June with the changes. So I'm not going to go through, uh, the changes that we had there. But basically we have the same distinctions as we did, uh, last year, maybe calculated just a little bit differently. But you have, um, achievement, academic achievement and reading, math, science, social studies. You have the top twenty-five percent in the comparative academic growth, which is basically that domain two, um, two A now. And then the comparative, uh, comparative, uh, closing the gaps, which is, uh, basically domain three now. And then the post-secondary readiness. So basically the same categories, just calculated differently. We have at the top here that twenty-nine campuses received at least one distinction. And so what I'm going to do, uh, kind of like what I'm going to do when I do the TAPR report, is I've got all of them listed on the next several slides, won't read all of them, but I'll, uh, give you just a few seconds to glance through them and then we'll move on. So, uh, in the reading and English language arts, we had eleven campuses. You can see you had three high school campuses, uh, two junior highs, and then several elementaries there. Moving on to math, we had thirteen campuses on the high school campuses. We had four, looks like, uh, four on the junior highs and then several elementaries. Moving on to science, twenty campuses, uh, several of the high schools, a couple of the junior highs and numerous, uh, elementary campuses. Then we move to social studies. Uh, one caveat on the social studies is elementary, that's not eligible to elementaries because they don't have a social studies test and so that's why you don't see any elementaries. But eight campuses, uh, looks like we have four high schools and four junior highs. Academic growth, twelve campuses, three high schools, three, uh, junior highs, several elementaries. And then closing the gaps, that's, that's the domain three, eleven campuses. You can see those listed. And then the post-secondary readiness there, nine campuses. Okay, moving forward, um, oh, one last slide on distinctions. So we had two campuses that, uh, actually got all distinctions. That's always like a gold star when they get all of them. That's really exciting there. Uh, maybe the difference there is again, ditto, it's an elementary campus. So they got six out of six because they don't have the social studies available to them. But then Gunn got the seven out of seven. So it's all, always exciting when they get all distinctions. So we had two of those. Okay, just real quickly on the calendar, uh, I'm not going to go through the whole calendar. Really what I'm going to focus on is those, uh, those last, uh, two or three lines. Uh, September fourteenth, any appeals that we're going to consider, which I kind of alluded to one while ago, that has to be turned in on, uh, September fourteenth. And then we're not notified of, uh, the result of that until December. Basically when they do the appeal, you know, we had one last year, we had short that we applied for. Uh, the data doesn't change, they leave all the data the same, they just change the rating if they accept the appeal. And that is all I have right now unless you have questions.
Uh, I doubt there's any questions, Dr. Barlow.
I was guessing there might be one or two, but.
All right. I'll get the screen over here. Uh, thank you for, uh, while I'm waiting for, uh, response from trustees. Uh, for you and your team for being way smarter than me, that's for sure. My gosh, what a complicated process and system that you have to go through. Um, it, it is just phenomenal to fathom that there's all this complexity that's supposed to boil down to a number or a grade. Um, and obviously by your, uh, slides and, and discussion, they're still not sure that they got it right, uh, at all. Uh, with all the changes that you experienced all summer long with all the data sets and.
Yes.
And adjustments. And that's not even talking about the changes they made that maybe statutorily they were out of bounds or not. Uh, so I, I really just want to say thank you. Uh, it's, it, it's a blessing to be able to have, uh, this level of intellect here at this district to be able to look and decipher the data, siphon through the data, uh, to protect our assets here, our students and their performance. Because that's, that is what it's all about. And I can't even imagine other districts that don't have the, the, the opportunities to have that included in, in their, uh, overall organizational structure. So I really appreciate that. There are some trustees, uh, that have questions. Uh, first, uh, Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you. All right, on page five, I had a question on the, on the college ready, uh, column. And you mentioned the SAT and dual credit and all of those. Are the Avid courses counted in? Because I know our Avid teachers do a great job of helping prepare students. And I know part of their program is college ready. Do they include the Avid program?
I do not believe they do at this point. You'll notice there's also that one that says meet standards on a composite indicators indicating college readiness. So, uh, as you may know, I'm a member of the ATAC committee that visits with, uh, the director that actually tries to kind of work through this at TEA. And so our discussion there has been, what does that look like? And so as we go into the next year, I'm sure there'll be discussion on what does that combination of indicators look like? So it may be something where we add something like that in, I don't know, but currently, uh, that wouldn't be considered.
Okay, thank you. And then on page eight, under school progress domain. And you mentioned something, if I understood correctly, about they compare the two years. So I know in Arlington, we have a lot of mobility. Kids are here, then they're gone for a little while, they're back. So if we don't have two years of information, do we lose, lose points?
No. So there would be three touch points there. First, you would have to have a score from last year and a score from this year. And in that student, also had to be here on snapshot date in October. If a student doesn't meet all three of those touch points, then they would just come out of the calculation altogether. They wouldn't go on the numerator or to the denominator, they'd just come out.
Thank you. And then another question on page twelve, um, on the military readiness. I realize the military will, cannot give us the information. Do they base that on our students that are enrolled in the ROTC programs? How are they going to get that military information?
That has been a deep discussion at ATAC as far as how does that work? Uh, and so I think everybody's doing that a little bit differently. Basically, it's how we code them in PIMS and it's kind of left up to the district on how you decide that. So if you wanted to decide that ROTC would mean that you're military ready, then you could do that. Or if you wanted to counsel with students and ask them, and they said, yes, I'm going in the military. Basically, the discussion at, at ATAC has been, they don't know how to do it, they're leaving it up for districts and the districts can decide how, um, how they're going to calculate that.
That might be something we want to look at to, to put that in the system so we know which kids are, are the military, um, military ready through our ROTC programs. Because again, those, those do amazing jobs with the students and I think they are military ready. One last question.
I'd like to interrupt, uh, your, your, your statement is, is, uh, spot on. Uh, Dr. Kavasos wants to say something.
So I just want to interject that that specifically is one of our reviews for the appeal. Is because they're applying these standards to seventeen graduates, twenty seventeen graduates. And a lot of this data is, is, wasn't required necessarily to be submitted, but also is being pulled from different areas. And it's the first time the state actually tries to pull all this data. We didn't know it was going to be pulled until these rules came out. And so that's a review from Kevin's department and his resources to review all of our seventeen graduates to make sure that these, this information was coded, uh, accurately, number one, but that it was captured. And we clarify, how do these things actually become, uh, an indicator for our students? And, and that's, that's one of those big areas, uh, in terms of our, our seventeen graduates.
Thank you. Because I think if we're going to be given points or penalized, we need to know upfront so that we have that information available. And we have great ROTC programs here in, in AISD. And I think if, if that's going to be part of the grading, we need to know so we can identify it and, and include it in, in that data. And then one last, it's not really a, a question. If, well, I'll just be blunt. If they've messed up so much in losing tests and messing up the data and, you know, students that, that studied for these tests, took these tests, and then they're told your information doesn't count for whatever reason, how can we trust that these are even the correct scores? How can we trust that we were given the correct percentages for the different campuses and that our final grade is truly reflective? Because I, I, I don't, I think there have been so many mistakes along the way. How can we trust their math is, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely. And we, and we've had that discussion, uh, here, uh, internally that, that's, that's a, a, a concern that we have. Uh, how can we actually go through and provide evidence or prove, you know, who knows? But yes, that's a concern that we have.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate everything you and your team have done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Mrs. Mase.
Thank you, President Rice. Thank you, Dr. Barlow and your group for the information that you've put together. Um, I have a few questions. One, I'll just hit on briefly because it was the military readiness. Um, I guess my question is if it's supposed to be accurate in how we capture it, it sounds like it's up to us to determine if it's accurate and how we capture it.
Yes.
Or any other district to do the same thing. Correct. So, you know, if, if you have personnel at the door in front of every school within the, every day that we're open, does that mean we hit sixty-one thousand students and they were prepared or ready because of the information they got? So that's very interesting how that is. So I'll be very interested in hearing how the appeal goes. And not only that, but to find out if we're the only district that's actually filing that appeal. Um, my other question. Um, I'm going to skip that and save that one for last. Um, for the distinctions that were, that were, um, acknowledged for the different campuses, just a point of interest that I want to raise is, is I see, um, some high schools on here who, um, consistently were receiving distinctions for this area or that area. But I don't necessarily see the, the feeders on here also recognizing that. So just an interesting point that either some of our high schools are doing some amazing job, uh, catching up or something for our students to where they're able to actually gain those distinct, those distinguishments prior their feeder. So just something interesting. And I may even one day, uh, want to see some information that kind of shows for some of the high schools that are either regularly on here for distinctions, um, how the feeder schools look that are feeding into that high school.
Sure.
And where that disconnect could be.
I'll just share that, um, how you earn a distinction at high school is different than how you earn a distinction at junior high is different than how you earn it at elementary. And that's part of the, uh, I'll just summarize because I can go on and on for that. But basically that's, that's the issue. Is that you can earn them a certain way at high school, another way at junior high, and another way at elementary. And they're not all congruent. Is that the best way of saying it, Dr. Barlow?
Noted. Thank you. Um, okay, and then, um, for, on page sixteen or the one that says our, uh, overall district rating calculation is, uh, it calculated out to be a seventy-eight or a C for this year. Um, with that being said, um, I think AISD, um, is doing a great job, um, starting at the classroom level with our teachers, um, with educating our students, with, um, teaching them how to be, um, great citizens in our. in our community, teaching them how to be prepared, whether it's going to be a career, college, whatever they choose once they graduate. But with that being said, with the 78, if I just put on my mind of thinking in the business world, would be if, whatever we're reaching, no matter what the reasons are, and I understand there are some very valid reasons for how these things were calculated, and some just flat-out don't make sense. But at the same time, don't want to use those for excuses, because really, the bottom line of the question that I want to have as a parent with my students here in the district is, are my students getting what they need to get in the classroom level from this district? So once again, with my business mind hat on, my first thought would be, okay, so if we have a 78 and we say we want to do better, I was very pleased to at least see that you have on page 20, your comparisons of approaches, meets, and masters, which to me would be, if we're not hitting the mark, what's the strategy to hit the mark?
Sure.
What are we going to do? So I appreciate this PowerPoint that you have. I would like for you to give me kind of a summary of the definitions of the approaches grade level or above, that meets the grade level, and the masters grade level. Because if those are the areas that we're focusing, I just want to make sure that we all understand what the definitions of those categories are.
So that's quite challenging, because there's not a really clear definition as far as the descriptors for those. The best definition would be the meets is, the meets is meets grade level. So the idea there is that when you attain the meets, then you're on grade level, however that's defined. I mean, that's debatable as well, as what does on-grade level mean? So the meets kind of starts there with the meets. Meets is on-grade level. So if you'll remember back, oh, several years ago, when we started doing STAR, and then we talked about all these standards kind of phasing in and so forth, the target was always the meets. To get to the meets grade level, that was called, I think at the time, final standard, I'm trying to remember what it was called. Yeah, yeah, final recommendation, it's changed so many times. So if you start at the meets. Then the approaches is a little bit less than that, which is basically what we had, I believe, two years ago, when the commissioner said, okay, we're not going to do any more of the progression, we're just going to have one standard. And it was going to be 2015-16. And that's the standard, we're going to call that passing for right now, but we're going to put an emphasis on the meets, which is meets grade levels. And then the masters is more like the old commended, where we had the commended status. It's a, you have to get almost the whole test right to get to the masters. I mean, it's like all the questions except for maybe, you know, five or six questions to get to the masters. So it's a really high standard to get to that. That's probably the best way I can explain that, because there's not a whole lot of definition around it, but I hope that helps.
Okay. So then in my mind, I would think, in what you have here for the comparison, 100% of approaches at grade level still means you would have 100% of your students not quite meeting the grade level. Is that accurate?
Conceptually, the way TEA frames it up, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Absolutely.
So is, are those, for lack of a better term, cut points that are determined on those exam results? Are those fixed now, or are those moving targets? Or is that arbitrary from year to year, or how's that work?
That's a great question. They've been fixed for, I'm trying to remember now when they fixed them, but they've been fixed for about three years now, in respect to those being static. You're right, though, but like four years ago, they kept changing, and that was causing all kinds of frustration.
Right, okay, thank you. Sorry, Ms. Mays.
No, no, thank you. Okay. So then does this mean that going forward, we'll have some information that talks about how we are, how we're working our strategy, how we're meeting whatever? If the definitions are still kind of moving around, how do we really know that the strategy that we're putting in place is going to work for this flawed scoring system?
I'll just interject, if you go back to that slide, maybe, there are too many slides to go back to, but the big variable there, Ms. Mays, because we've had a lot of this discussion, is the fact that, that other one, you passed it already.
You passed it?
Yeah, the one that has our rating there.
Oops.
That one.
This one? Okay.
So the big variable is that they take the highest of those three. And so you could be using one strategy and affecting one of the areas and not impacting your overall results. So you could have a lot of growth, for example, in that 73, the first one.
Right.
But because there's an 80 there, they take the 80. And so that's a challenge, and that's precisely what we've been delving into with our principles, et cetera, is what are those big levers? Because this system is so complicated, and, let me find the right words, it's somewhat arbitrary, because some of those things that you move, if you get 73 to a 77, that's a lot of growth. But that 80 is the one that's going to count. So there's no real credit, if you will, for that growth. So that's a challenge, is to find those levers. And then there's also this, all of the component of CCMR, College Career Military Readiness, that has a whole different strategy that actually affects some of the bottom ones. So to your point, it's finding the right strategies with this system that really make achievement. So another way of saying it is, we could have a higher student achievement domain.
Right.
And someone else could have a higher progress, and they're going to take the higher score. And so that makes it challenging to find the actual strategy. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Kevin?
I might add one point to the CCMR. So I referred a while ago that all of these data are based off of 2017 graduates. So let's think about, as we move into the school year, school starts next week, the CCMR is already set for this year, because all the CCMR for this coming year are based off of 2018 graduates. And so that component of the accountability system for 2018-19 is basically set, because there's not really anything else we can do with those 2018 graduates. So it's just that awkwardness of kind of being a year behind.
Okay. Okay, then I guess my last question is, once again, thank you for this information. It's good information for us to know, and I'm sure that everyone within education and our directors and executives understand this information. But for the public, for our community, for our parents, that don't understand what the people I think created it don't completely understand, but how do you, how do we, how do we say to them what this grade really means? And for those districts that scored A or B, is there anything that we could look at towards those districts that looks so much different than what's happening in our district to cause the same formula that they're using for both districts to be so different?
Sure. So from an analysis point of view, we're constantly looking at, are there other districts that kind of look like us and that are performing higher than us? And so those are always options. I think we've actually had administrators go to other districts to investigate that. As far as communicating to the public, I know that several of us met, especially like a couple of days ago when we did the press release, trying to brainstorm exactly how to explain that. Because you're exactly right, we have challenges in our office, understanding this, and trying to figure out how to explain it to educators, which are in it every day. How do we explain it to the community and parents? And so when we get to that point, as we did with the press release, several of us kind of brainstormed together on, how do we best explain that? And I don't know if you want to, or, sure.
Hi. So I think you're posing a question that all of us want to answer, and I think the way I would answer it initially is, in essence, this almost reverts back to the old system where we used to have exemplary recognized, like simple labels that tried to capture an overall idea so that someone can understand it. And so I think this is the state's way of trying to utilize labels that mean something to people, like A, B, C, and D. The challenge with that is there's a broad range within a single label that really, where the story really lies, is within that range. So if you were to look at our score, which is right now currently a C, and you were to compare neighboring districts, but look at the makeup of their scores, you would see like they would label it like domain one, a C, a B, and a C. And our domains actually look labeled exactly the same, C, B, C. But the reason why they have a B and we have a C is because within those labels, the actual spread of numbers exist. And so the difference between a B and a C could be, like in our situation, 1.5 as the number, right? But there's a difference between a person, a school district that's scoring a B, who is barely crossing the finish line, and someone who has like an 89 that's close to an A. And I think that's the challenge when it comes to explaining to the community about what the meaning of a label actually means. It's like back in the olden days when you were a recognized school, and you barely crossed the finish line to get recognized, and you were being compared with the exact same label to a school that was one point from exemplary. That spread is really significant, and the amount of work that goes into that is very different. And so the benefit that we used to have in the last system, it was met standard or improvement required, and so the numbers spoke themselves. So you could actually say to a parent, this is a 78, or this is an 82, or this school next door is an 81, and we're a 78, and say, oh, we're really only three points difference. But now, when you label it very simplistically, just so that people think they understand it easier, you've actually created the misperception that a school is either doing better or worse than the other one, when really there may be a one-point difference in one specific domain. So I think that you kind of hit on the challenge of trying to communicate this to a community, because what you want them to know is, your schools are actually doing pretty well, and not even that much different than your neighbor who may have a B, for example. It's just the label sends a message that doesn't necessarily articulate the details of the actual number itself. And so you have to encourage people to kind of like look at the numbers themselves and try to understand it, which is very complex for people. So it's not a really great answer to your question.
See, I don't think my neighbor would accept.
I think that's.
What does that mean?
I think it's not a very good answer to your question, but I think what I'm trying to articulate is the complexity of trying to answer it, because the simplicity of the label doesn't do any justice to what actually constitutes the label itself. And two people with two labels, that one looks better and one looks worse, could actually be difference from each other at one point. So they're actually performing virtually the same. Does that make, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Yeah, it does, it does. I think I'm still digesting all of this.
I don't know the simple answers.
And there's not a simple answer. But at the same point, we still have to have a strategy, because we're still going to have to.
Right.
Be accountable, whatever way the state's choosing to have us be accountable.
And I don't, and I think that's an important point, too. Like there, you have to accept the system for what it is and work within it. And I think for us, one of the biggest things that we have to figure out is, what is the lever to pull? Because it's one thing to, like Dr. Cavassos mentioned, when it comes to those cut scores of approaching versus meet versus masters, those are a number of questions that you answered correctly on the exam. And so obviously, every school system wants their kids answering more questions than not. But those cut scores, like approaching, has always been passing. So when a parent receives a score from their, from the state, and their kids were approaching, it's marked as a pass test, is how you would look at it. But the way the state weighs it now, it doesn't look the same. So the value of it towards the actual system itself is more diminished. So passing isn't really passing anymore. Now you have to actually get to meets. So the rules around that have actually changed. So our task, like Dr. Cavassos explained, is to figure out, what is the lever to actually pull? We're always going to be working towards helping kids do better and meet standards. That's like, that's the no-brainer that everyone would work on in the classroom. That's the goal of every teacher and everybody. In terms of the system, that alone won't get you a passing score in the system, per se. You have to think of all the other complexities. So it is like, how do you code kids specifically around military readiness, for example? Or how many kids are, what's the demographic of the students that are in the system, and are they receiving, are they all performing at the specific levels that the state is attaching to a specific domain? And if you look at our comparison from the year before, like domain three, if we were to compare it to the same data last year to this year for progress, it was a 10-point gain. The challenge is, is we didn't operate under that system last year, and so it is kind of, we get the 10, it's 73 this year, but it doesn't necessarily equate to, it doesn't have any value to last year in terms of showing progress or growth. So what our team is actually investigating with Dr. Barlow is, looking at all the numbers, looking at all the data and figuring out, where is the actual lever to pull that actually has the biggest impact in terms of meeting the standard to communicate it easily to the community, while at the same time continuing our progress that we're doing with kids to help them do better, not only on the assessment, just in teaching and learning in general, because our trajectories, you compare last year, this year, is actually positive. So how do you stay on that track, but at the same time, make sure that you're crossing the finish line by meeting the rules that are new to us, that are a new part of the system? So, yeah. So basically, that is the question we're trying to identify. What we will do is, in October, when we come back with the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans, you will see our strategies embedded into those plans, and specifically how we intend to monitor and measure them over the course of the year.
Okay, that'll be great. I appreciate that. And then, Dr. Barlow, I don't know if you specifically answered my question, but you were talking about, one way that we do it is to compare ourselves to like districts. Have y'all done that with this new information that just came out, or do you all plan on doing that?
We plan on doing that. We haven't gotten very deep in it, because the data's so new.
Is that something?
So we run some analysis, but we haven't gotten very far.
Is that something that'll come back in October as well, or is that something we've got to wait for you to come back in another year?
I don't know that we could get it done in October. We can certainly work with the team and see, you know, what progress we make as far as comparing to other campuses and districts, and kind of seeing what those high lever points would be.
Okay. But we will have privy to that information at some point.
Sure, sure.
And then lastly, I'll just say, so for the point that you were trying to make, Dr. Wirth, is hopefully, we will continue, and not just administration, but parents, community, board members, continue to say, hey, we are doing a great job. And hopefully, this does not change the trajectory that our teachers are doing in the classroom, preparing our kids. And same thing as we tell our kids that labels don't matter, I guess we're going to have to say. And the same thing applies when the state tries to label you. But once again, just being held accountable, I don't think is a bad thing. But I guess the way that it's done, it needs to be fair, it needs to be understandable, and I think it needs to use things that really, truly show progress.
Sure.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
None of which, perhaps, this current system utilizes. Okay. Just clarification, Mr. Chapa, you had requested you withdraw for now? I just, okay, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a glitch. Okay. Ms. Walton, please.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I'm so frustrated, and I know it has to be that way sometimes in your day, by this, because it's kind of old news. I mean, it's the scores from a year ago, and then they put new rules on top of those scores. So it's a constant-moving target. Am I totally off-base on that?
You're right on target.
So if we want to improve, and they keep doing this, we keep producing scores, and then they change the rules again, and, you know, we don't get lucky, like some of our, you know, some other districts may have, then we're just spinning our wheels. And what my colleague, Ms. May, said is very right. We just need to keep moving forward with what we know are good strategies for teachers and kids to use to just improve their minds. And the devil with this number that, you know, everybody fixates on. Just one other question. Is there any way that this gives us any information about underlying causes for why we're a 78? Or why we, you know, aren't a 84, or whatever?
Sure. I mean, causal relationships are a little bit challenging sometimes, as far as, you know, trying to actually dig into the data. I kind of referred to that just a little bit, as far as, so this would be what we consider quantitative data. And then once we kind of see where our quantitative data lands, then we start digging in a little bit deeper with some qualitative data, try to figure out those whys. So that may involve like some campus visits or classroom visits, visiting with teachers, trying to find out, you know, are there some areas of improvement that we can make, and specific areas that would actually affect the data that we're looking at today? So we're not quite there yet, but the 78 itself does not give us any really like causal data on, do this, and, you know, the score goes up. It really comes down to digging down deep and looking at more of a qualitative analysis, and visiting with a lot of the stakeholders involved, and trying to determine, are there areas of improvement that can be made?
And then in a year, we'll be testing a whole different group of children, and we'll be getting all different kinds of scores. And hopefully, you know, those kids benefit somehow from us tinkering with this and working, you know, as you say, digging down and delving in and all that. We might as well be rolling dice in Vegas, you know, as far as being able to figure out, what's the problem, how do we fix it? That's just not here. It's just not here. And that's not good pedagogical, you know, way of doing, of approaching, educating children.
Sure.
It's just wrong. It's just wrong. And I'm frustrated, and I know you are, too. And thank you and your team for all that you've done to try to understand this. And I just want to encourage all the kids, and all our teachers, and all our parents, not to put too much stock in this. Please don't let it demoralize you in any way, because everybody's working hard. This district is. This district is doing so many wonderful things that are right, and this is just wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. Ms. Fowler?
Yes, thank you. Question, and maybe it's in here and I missed it. I don't know that the parents necessarily care about the same data that the state does, right? About the the closing the gap or the growth or the military. I mean, we have to care about that because the state, the state cares about it, but I don't know that the parents do. Is there a way to to look at this and know, based on the testing material, did this student know the math? Did this student know the English? Did this student know the social studies? Is there a way to say they did well based on their knowledge? There were just all these other things that might have pulled us down? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think if I'm understanding your question right, I mean, the test is kind of limited to, you know, a certain limited number of questions. So I don't know that there's a way to do that. Certainly, that's kind of something we grapple with just as we talk about testing is how do you, you know, get a good measurement of student achievement? And you only can ask, you know, thirty or forty questions in the amount of time that you have. Uh I'm not sure exactly how we would do that. Certainly something that we can discuss in our office and ponder and see if there's a way to do it. I'm not sure exactly how we would.
Well, and I don't know that it would change anything, but but as a parent, you'd want to know, did my, did my child know the math and the English and the social studies? You know, and the teachers know what they do every day in teaching these students. Did they know that material? You know, it's all these other things that kind of get in the way that that we have to be accountable for. But as far as a teacher and the student and the parent, did they know that material? And I just think that's something I would want to know as a parent.
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Chapa?
Uh thank you, President Raj. I had a question on the approaches, meets and masters. Um I know that as part of your presentation, um it looks like the, there there's a relative scoring component to this where it tries to account for the difference in SES between the different districts. Is there anything like that for the approaches, meets and mastery um aspect to it? Or is that much more of an objective analysis?
As far as uh SES being attached to those standards, no. Now, when you average those together, then they go into that other component that, you know, was on that scatter plot there uh on that Domain Two-B. But as far as just those two, those three standards, no, that doesn't go into that calculation at all.
Okay, so and I'm, just to make sure I understand that. So if that component, even though it's rolled into the relative aspect of it, if the approaches, meets and master component of it would advantage a high SES district, i- i- does that get smoothed out at some point? Or is it still going to be a factor that follows through the whole analysis to still advantage a high SES district?
How we're understanding right now is that those standards have been set and that that's what would uh be maintained for the next five years. And so there would not be any smoothing out from the la- the latest word that we have from T E A, that those standards would be set, those set cut points and how that graph works. And there there's a huge chart that goes with that graph as far as if you're, say, zero to five percent SES, then you do this. If you're five to ten, then you do this, that sort of thing. So to my knowledge, there, those should not change. They should be the same for the next five years at least.
Okay.
But, I mean, anything could happen.
Okay, and and you, my next question, and I'm glad you mentioned the cut points because that goes into my next question. There was a point in here, and I forget which slide it was on, that you mentioned that the the talking point, at least from the state at this point, is that a cut point in the area uh for grades with Cs is supposed to be an indication of average performance.
Yes.
I- has there been any discussion in the group that you're a part of that it it, to go to the point of uh what people think they're getting when they look at the score? I mean, at the house I grew up in, a C was not considered average. It wasn't considered acceptable at all. So has there been any discussion of that's sort of a flawed fundamental assumption there that the public will understand that a C represents average performance?
Probably some of the more controversial discussions that we have has been right there. Is what what actually constitute an A, what constitutes a B, a C, a D and so forth? So there has been discussion. We haven't gotten very far on that as far as what does that actually mean? It just kind of uh the the discussion happens and then we kind of move on to another topic. So uh but yes, there's been discussion on that. Especially, especially, I'm remembering, I'm thinking back on uh at least one meeting that I remember and is the uh the other researcher sitting next to me is from another district, asked several times about, okay, so when we talk about an A, what does that mean? And in that particular analysis that we're looking at, there was only ten percent of the districts, I think, that would have gotten an A. And so he said, don't you think there ha- we have more than ten percent of our districts throughout Texas that are A? You know, so yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on that. There hasn't been any movement on that.
And is the, is the um goal with this moving forward, your understanding that sort of the, we've been talking about go- goalposts moving? And your point just now, that it's sort of a, it's sort of a normed system at some point, that it's designed to produce a preordained outcome of of A school districts when objectively, there may be many more than ten percent of the school districts that did surveys? Is that bar going to increase each year such that it'll be harder and harder for certain school districts to to catch up to that point?
So it's like, again, the the supposedly, those are supposed to stay set for five years? Because in my mind, if you sti- keep moving that, then you're gonna continue to have a forced distribution.
Right.
And so this first, supposedly what's supposed to happen is you basically have this kind of forced distribution for the first year out. But then once those standards are set, then it's set for five years and then anybody should be able to move up in the system. Does that happen or not? I don't know. That's kind of the theory behind it.
Yeah, 'cause I, and and this goes back to sort of a point that I had and and to editorialize a little bit. I, it it really bothers me that the underlying assumption is that C is average. And not only, and you look at our case, I mean, when I first saw this come out and you get the comments of a C is just not, we don't think that that's great. And then you you dig into it, not, and even not at the granularity that you just went through. But just looking at the high notes, you know, almost forty percent of our campuses got at least one distinction. The district as a whole got a distinction in post-secondary re- readiness. And yet, that's not what you, in my mind, that doesn't jive with what a C represents. And, you know, I think, going back to, I've been following accountability, you know, for a while. And and it's interesting to me because I I've sort of had a change in my own mind, and then, again, I'm still editorializing. But, you know, I, there was a time when I was much bigger believer in this because I felt like the initial goal of accountability when we first started going down this road and, um, you know, this stuff in the eighties and, oh, my gosh, we're so far behind other countries. And it was at some point, we needed to catch up and figure out where we are. And at another level, by the time we got to the nineties, it was, well, we need this accountability to figure out where are the gaps? Who are the kids who are falling through the cracks? Um and I think those goals were very well-intentioned, even if imperfectly uh imperfectly carried out. But it's interesting to me, I feel like ironically, we've reached a point where we started down this road where the design was for us to find kids who had fallen through the cracks, um find the low SES students who were being diserved. Um and we've come around to a point now where I feel like despite um very well-intentioned um efforts, we keep coming back to a system, no matter how many times we change it, to where it's it's almost stigmatic to low SES communities because no matter what system we're using, that ends up being the result. And today, I was just looking through the list in our area of of area schoo- of scores for area school districts. And a a year and a half ago, when we had our preliminary, you know, district and campus results, I overlaid them against a, I had a Facebook post where I overlaid those against some census data. My average household income in the lineup was almost, you know, app, you know, straight up. And it's the, it's the same thing here. And so, you know, I think an an important element, and and to Ms. Mays's point, we don't want to make excuses because we have to do the best by our students and we have to meet the the challenges that are set in front of us. But at some point, it's not excuses, um it it's reasons. And if if a reason, um we have this result is that the system, no matter how it's designed, inevitably comes up with the same result, I think that we're, you know, we're, to Ms. Walton's point, we're kind of spinning our wheels. And that's unfortunate, not only for us is it, and how we reflect in the community, but also for our students, and and they feel the same way. You know, so a- I, again, I, you know, I'm disappointed that, uh, you know, we were told this new system was going to be more nuanced. And here at the elementary and junior high levels, it's essentially a hundred percent the STAR test, um which is very disappointing. We're told it's going to be fairer, but it's still replicating, you know, in my mind, SES. Um we were told it's going to be more relevant, but, you know, it's hard to know where to push. And, you know, to Mr. Wirths's point, uh, we could show great progress in some of these domains. And because of the way that this is set up, um that might not be reflected in our overall score at all. And that's, that that bothers me a great di- uh deal that our progress uh might go unrecognized. And if you, you know, the, on your slide thirty-nine, um you can tell that the great progress that the district has made just between twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen um in domains, you know, Two-B and Three. Um our overall score, um is it on the right trajectory? Under the old system indexes, one, three and four, it's the same way. And so, you know, it's hard to draw that out when we're talking to the community. To the point that Ms. Mays uh was talking about earlier, you know, it's hard to have this kind of discussion with our neighbors. Um which leads into, you know, we were told that this new system was going to be easier to understand, but here we are and you've given a fifty-slide presentation. And I, you know, and we still have many questions about it. You know, so I I i- I'm still disappointed, um, you know, that we're having to do this. I know that there's a lot that goes into it, but um it seems like uh we've been here before and we'll probably be here again. But I look forward to the plans that we come up with to to handle this next challenge.
Sure.
Well-articulated, Mr. Chapa. Thank you. Oh, sorry, Mr. Hibbs, I. Let's try this again. No, I I got it. Uh, that's fine. Go right ahead.
Uh, thank you, Pres- President Raj. Okay. As we all know, that the the standardized tests, when they first came into being, was simply to go and tell a district, these are your children that were at risk. These are the people that uh you need to um uh ensure that, you know, as they're being measured by the rest of the state, you need to to address so they don't fall behind. Uh we we understand that 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 uh is how it was set up. It then became a ranking of the schools because they took sub, uh, you know, spiraled down into subgroups. And then finally became a punitive system on the um on districts. And that's where we're at now with the punitive system, um with the districts of the A through F rating. But we're there. And we have to talk about how we get from a C district to at least a B district. You take things in steps, and we've got to get there. A C in my book, and and I'm sorry that I'm going to be very blunt here, but the C in my book is not acceptable, is not acceptable. Not when we have a district to our east that we know that we outperform. And we know that we outperform. We need to ensure that we we're not put in a position where all of a sudden, last year, we have one school that is IR and this year, we've got four. We've got to ensure that we don't have that situation. When I first got on the board, we had a situation where we were addressing six eight schools that were uh IR. And then I saw that we were petitioning the state to uh to keep other ones from not being there. It is going to be my call to our district to ensure that we get to a point where we're not having other schools pop up. We can't have those surprises going forward. We need to ensure that we we address what we, uh, what our situations are here with these schools. I don't, I I I think that they're, they're being labeled and they've, uh, you know, inappropriately, in a wrong manner. I know that uh these schools are working hard. They've got the the best of the best educators in those schools. They're they're putting forward the same type of things. But we have to figure out what worked tremendously well with Webb this last year that that all of a sudden, they were able to beat those ratings and get back in. Oh, Wimbish, thank you, Wimbish. What what was it that was successful for them? And is that what we need to be doing at these other campuses? Do we have other campuses that that were at risk? Because, you know, somehow, these other campuses got Bs, or these other districts got Bs. In some cases, they got As. And we need to make sure that as a trustee, I'm entrusted not only by the people that have children in our district to ensure that they're uh that they're getting the best education. And I know that our administrators and I know that uh the administration is working to that end. But I also have constituents that are saying that we're taxpayers. And because of this flawed system, people that are going to come to Arlington are going to judge that letter. It is what I would like to see, what I would, I think that we all need to do a, and delve into, is how do we keep from having campuses borderline that's going to either say, we're going to make that that higher grade level, or are we going to remain where we're at? Really don't have any questions. That's that's just, I think, the challenge I would like to put forward
Sure.
to our district. Uh because unfortunately, the public sees this, realtors see this, and that's not what our district is. We've got so many incredible things happening. And when you look at the junior high and the high school level, it seems like we're, we're being able to hit uh hit all the matrix. But we have some uh areas uh with some of our elementaries that we're, that we're challenging. And that's, and that's causing us to lag behind. So with that, I'll, I'll just um revert back with my.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Hibbs. Uh, Ms. Mays, you were up. Did you still want to speak?
Well, I just wanted to make one.
Go go ahead, please.
I just wanted to make one um clarification and just make sure that it was very clear um that when I was speaking, that um I am by no means saying that any other district has done anything wrong or the word lucky um used. I mean, I guess we could call it what we want to. I just want to be very clear that I'm saying we were all judged by the same method. So therefore, all we can do is hold ourselves accountable to do better. I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you. I don't see any other uh lights indicating more discussion. I do have one question um related to the forced distribution. So with that being applied this year, do you have any idea where that affected districts, specifically us, positively or negatively? Any ideas? Would it have moved our needle at all? Uh basically saying that we've got this bell curve and there's this many on the top end and this many on the bottom. Did, with being at a, however flawed it is, at that seventy-eight, being so close, would that, if it was just a straight system without that distribution model, would that have affected, do you know? Have you thought about that at all?
If that, uh, basically taking that uh component Two-B out. So uh if I go back to, as Dr. Cavasus kind of mentioned a while ago, I think, uh, yeah. So let's look at this slide right here. So Two-B is the, that uh seventy-nine is related to that forced distribution with respect to that scatter plot. And so that particular score was not included in our final rating because we used the eighty. So that component of it was not affected. Now, there's other, there's other pieces that have the forced distribution as well, like when they set the standard for uh the student achievement domain and the uh Part A and closing the gaps. So the the forced distribution would still be there and it would still affect us. But that one is kind of so obvious that there, you know, we kind of look at with respect to the scatter plot, that one wouldn't have affected us because that score didn't go into the final calculation. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well, it, to a degree. So if that Two-B um was a so I I guess what I'm try, yeah, let me try to understand. So the seventy-nine is our actual result, or that's the effect of the forced distribution?
Well, there's a, there's a forced distribution component on each one of these domains.
Right.
Each, each four, all four of those components have some level of a forced distribution based off of cut scores and scaling and so forth. So that affects all of them. And and those other three, uh, or the two big ones there that affected us would be uh Part A and the last one, that closing the gaps, because those were the two final scores that actually went into the calculation. So those, the forced distribution. So those, the forced distributions that were applied to those, yes, they affected us. I guess I was using that scatter plot because I think that's the one everybody kind of thinks of because it's got lines drawn and everything. But yes, the forced distribution would have affected us.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And yeah, this is a, definitely a communication challenge for our community to Mr. Hibbs' point and I believe Ms. Mays as well. It, it is a system that is flawed, but we are all, all districts equally judged by it. So we've, we've got to, we've got to work on something for sure.
Sure.
All right. Before I say thank you, just one more opportunity. Any trustees have additional thoughts or questions? All right. Thank you. Oh, I knew it. Go ahead, Mrs. Mays.
The only thing that I want to say is, Melody, I think you were saying, you know, how do we know? How will we judge if we use this? But I also think that it's very important that we remember our strategic plan, that we spend a lot of time putting together that says, hey, this is how we're going to measure the success of our district for our children. So I think if we continue to monitor our strategic plan and how closely we're following that, I, I think we can be very, very proud.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Barlow and team, and look forward to additional information and maybe, maybe movement in a different direction after we hear back from the state. All right. So with that, we will move on to the open forum for non-agenda items. I see no cards. So we will move on to superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Rice. And obviously, we're getting in full swing for this school year. And so one of the activities we had was new teachers reporting to our district. And I want to thank Lynn Nguyen for his, he was the, the guest speaker there for the new teachers. And he's making a bowl of, from clay. He, he actually is. And he's discussing it all the way through with his point being that we mold our kids and that they have that opportunity. And, and Lynn did a full presentation on that. And so thank you, Lynn, for, for that. Next, our transportation department had their annual meeting coming back to school. And we had some special recognitions given to Natalie Carter, who was accident free for 25 years. And what an amazing accomplishment. And thank you for your dedication, Natalie, for that. Last Friday was a big day in AISD as we officially kicked off our introduction of AISD leadership definition. We had teacher leaders, principals, department chairs from, from all over the district, all over, all over our system to roll out our leadership definition at Sam Houston High School in their cafeteria. The rain on Saturday did not dampen our spirits for the AISD back-to-school kickoff. More than 7,500 backpacks were handed out and cosmetology students from the Dan Diaper Career Tech Center were on hand to provide haircuts and all kinds of services. So thank you to our community. It was a little rainy out there, but, but it was fun. We, we survived and, and were able to provide a lot of service. Yesterday, attended the brick dedication ceremony for our first graduating class at the Arlington Collegiate High School. One more recognition for this wonderful class, the first cohort of the collegiate high school, where the community generously donated money to have a brick with their name permanently set there in front of the school for each one of the, of the graduates. So we were fortunate to have TCC representatives, the chancellor, and some of the board members as well to, to that ceremony. Finally, today, we had our day of service across our district. More than 100 campus employees or district employees, non-campus, I should say, employees ventured off to different locations to do everything from moving books, I think Mr. Chapa moved some books and bookshelves, Dr. Rice moved bookshelves. I had an interesting morning helping one of our science teachers at Bowie High School, who was very exact and precise, and I wasn't quite exact and precise as he wanted, but he tolerated me for, for a bit of time there. So I just want to thank everyone who was able to get out to, and Mr. Hogg also went out there to put some Care Bears up. You have a whole story about that, but, well, that's true. It was much more complicated than that. I'm sure it was much more complicated. So, so we had, and Polly, Ms. Walton also went out to help some of our campuses. So thank you so much to all our wonderful teachers who are gearing up to, to come back and meet our students and greet our students. You know, this is a special district because of the people that we have. And that's simply put. And we can have a lot of discussions, and we should, about accountability and testing and things like that. We should spend a lot of time on that. But we should always keep in mind that the people in the organization, over 8,500 employees are the ones that make it happen every single day for our students. And we're blessed to be in Arlington AISD with such a great team. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Are there any trustees that have reports? Mr. Hibbs?
Got one thing I want to talk about with the bond oversight committee, but before I start that, I, Dr. Cavassos made an incredible point, a point that needs to be heard. We had over 8,500 employees in our district and to a T, each and every one of them are dedicated to our children, dedicated to the success of our children, from the person that's taking care of the grounds to the person delivering food, to the person educating in the classroom, and everybody in between. I went on a rant because we, we were under a goofy system a few moments ago. We hold ourselves accountable. We don't try to get away from it. We hold ourselves accountable. And I want to share with you also, the public. I believe in our administration. I believe our administration is going in the right direction. I believe in our leadership with Dr. Cavassos and his team. And to every campus administrator, if anybody saw the opening of this meeting tonight and was able to see the passion that our new hires at the campuses are either going to be principals or APs, this district is headed in the right direction. And I do not want that to ever be lost. I'm going to champion for this district because I believe, and I've stated this many times and many places, I'll put up our top graduates from any campus against any school in North Texas, and I believe that ours will come out on top. I believe that much in our, our district. With that, I would like to share with you an opportunity for the public to be engaged and involved. We have a CBOC Committee, which all equates to Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Applications for this committee is actually going on now through September 7th. The AISD is accepting these applications for placement on that committee. The committee was established to provide transparency, to enhance public confidence in the use of the proceeds of our sale of our bonds that were authorized by the AISD voters back in May of 2014. The purpose of this committee is to provide findings and recommendations to the Board of Trustees relating to the expenditure of those bond, funds. So we're a very transparent district that we allow our citizens to be involved, be educated on all the projects that are taking place, and then we also seek their feedback. And they, and many times have graded us on that. So once again, I would encourage anybody that would like to learn more about our district, be able to see how your tax dollars are being used, to go online, apply for this. The application process will be open through Friday, September 7th, 2018 at 4:00 PM. And with that, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hibbs. Appreciate that. And I hope that we have a flurry of applicants because it is, it is a vital, vital component to our, our informed perspective as trustees. So thank you. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. I just want to say, as we move forward to Monday, our first day of school, welcome back to our students, to our teachers, the administration staff. I just want to let everyone know that I'm sure all of us within our churches and within our communities have been saying prayers for a wonderful year. For our students, I'm also really excited and make sure that you go out and you catch a few football games here in AISD. We've got some great players out there on the field, all of our high schools.
Good band halftime shows.
Good band halftime shows, great cheerleaders to your team, all of the above. So just make sure that you, you stay involved in seeing what our district is doing. And then lastly, I would just like to wish my mom a happy birthday. She is 88 years old today. And I just want to thank her for imparting in me what a servant's heart looks like, for teaching me to do everything that I do with high integrity, and that sometimes you make mistakes along the way, but as long as your heart was pure and your heart was right, you keep going. So happy birthday, Mom.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Ms. Mays, I heard there was something special about that quarterback at Bowie High School.
What?
It looks like you for some reason. I don't know. I think you could throw a 10-yard out, Ms. Mays. I think you could step in if you ever had to. Dr. Cavassos, I have to respond because I did more than just put up Care Bears today at Hell Elementary, even though one of my jobs in pre-K was to put up the entire Care Bear collection that one of our teachers has had since she was a little girl. So I had to, she had exact orders of which Grandma Care Bear went next to the cousin grandparent. It was, I learned more about Care Bears in that time, but I also put together the PLC room, which I told Hell Elementary, you can move it right after I leave. I'm, I'm not known for my interior design, but I did put it together for them. And then they finally gave me my real job of moving some heavy, moving some heavy filing cabinets. So it was an enjoyable day and I appreciate all the staff. I know how much central office, warehouse, all the people that do this. It's hard to take a whole morning off. I think it's a nice model to show because the complaint you always hear is you don't ever come out to the campuses. You don't see this. And I think it helps everyone that doesn't get to see those campuses every day, understand what they're working for every single day, which is those teachers and those students that are being in there. One thing on sad news, and I know the whole board knows about this, but just to make it aware, it's last week we lost one of the big education advocates in Arlington. A Miss LaSanne Peters passed away. From a board's perspective and district, she's been a friend of this district for as long as anyone knows. She helped start the Aware Foundation. What people don't know, you look at some of our, she specifically funded some of our reading oaseses in multi-alimentaries. My wife was one of the recipients and people, this is one of those things she did and no one gave recognition. She paid every year to send some fifth grade teachers to Williamsburg in Virginia because they teach about the revolution. And my wife, as a fifth grade teacher, would still say that was the most learning experience she's ever had in that, and really helped bring that back to the students in that classroom. Yeah, LaSanne, she just does it all. You know, she's, she's, she never looked for recognition. She never looked for anything. Court's continuing that, her son, in an amazing way. And so I know they're, you know, she's still, she's, she likes to have her pulse and control everything. And I've heard she's still controlling and they're going to do, there's no date officially set, but there will be a celebration of life coming up, I think in the next week or two is when they're, I don't think they have an official date. But I just would ask everyone to keep the Peters family in your prayers. I know I said some prayers for them tonight during our moment of silence, but I want to make sure everyone was aware from the entire community, from a true education advocate in LaSanne Peters. Arlington, Arlington lost an important one for us there. And we just thank her for everything her and her family has done for this district over the many, many, many years.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. It was, yeah, very, very sad, sad day. What an advocate that we had in her. I have just a couple of comments personally, just to reaffirm to the board, I participated in a Chamber of Commerce panel on property taxes and what are we going to do about our high property taxes? So it was the, the morning after our last board meeting, I think I mentioned it, but I just want to let everybody know that there were, it was a packed room in, in that chamber boardroom, about 120 individuals that represented businesses and chambers, chamber members from Northeast Tarrant County Coalition of Chambers. And it was a wonderful opportunity for me to be able to highlight what property tax actually means for a school district versus a county or a city. And there were several people that were blown away about the facts as far as what we were talking about earlier with what's, what's on our tax bill versus what we actually get and the state's share and valuations in the formulas, et cetera. So just another example of how we will continue this conversation and educate our, our public and hopefully push for some legislative change. One story from the back-to-school bash, and before I say the story, Ms. Burdo, Mr. Peralis, amazing, amazing work. I loved being able to share stories there with so many volunteers that were there from different organizations, which that all by itself is phenomenal. But to share with them and, and some parents as well that were there, that, you know, over the past week and a half or so, it was all over the news, Dallas had their back-to-school thing, and they were boasting that they had 13,000 backpacks, which, yeah, that's, that's wonderful. But the fact that we had 10,000 backpacks and they are three to four times our size, that shows what we have in our community, helping our kids. I'm so proud to be in Arlington and have, have the, the, the work and the coordination that staff do to put this thing on and the support from our community is just phenomenal. So the, the story, there, there's always a story that, that touches you. There was, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, our, our, our career tech kids doing the haircuts was, this was the first opportunity for that. Because of that, A, we were able to increase the capacity. There was more kids than we had partners, professional partners last year and the year before. And so we were able to serve more children. And it's such a great thing to be able to share that story with everybody because not only is it a great experience for our kids in, in giving them the experience, it's a great experience for those little kids looking up to the big kids going, wow, you're cutting my hair and this is maybe something I can do. And it's a wonderful service learning opportunity for those kids cutting the hair because they're immediately seeing the benefits and giving back. So just amazing things going on in this district. The story is related to the haircuts. There was a little girl who was getting, she was, I don't know how old she was, maybe five, I'd say no more than five, four, five, getting her very first haircut. And that was amazing. And that's, that opportunity was there for, because of everything that has happened with that back-to-school kickoff. So it's just phenomenal. Think of that, five years old. So anyway, just wanted to put that out there. And then just to reiterate the, the shout out to all of our teachers, all of our staffs, all of our schools that were engaged, so much so today, the day of service was great to be able to participate in that. I was over at Swift and the picture that was up there was the, the photo op picture with a smile and everything's great. What they didn't show was the dripping wet sweat picture on the back end of all, all the work. My point there is not to say, oh, I work so hard. It's that.
Other people came in and helped care for her.
Yeah, no, no. It's that our, our district staff and our teachers, they do that all the time. And they put in literally that blood, sweat, and tears. And what do they do at the end of the day today? They have the sneak peek at all the campuses. So their campuses were mostly in their rooms in shambles and they work their tails off and then put on that smiling face, which they had, by the way, during that entire day. Amazing spirit in this district. So I just want to put that out there. I know that in 72 hours or so, we're going to have all those kids coming back. And I'm just so, so moved by our, our, our teachers and our staff. And there's such a collaborative effort and people moving, if they were able to move to other campuses and help other campuses besides their own, they did that too. And that's phenomenal. So thank you, Dr. Cavassos, for just doing a great job with having. So thank you, Dr. Kavasos, for just doing a great job with having what I see in this district. It's always been a caring district, but to me, it's really, it's hit new, new heights in, in leadership and, and the culmination of a positive culture and positive environment. And that's really noticeable to me, definitely was today. So that's all I have. And with that, we will, well, before I adjourn, Madam Secretary, are there any items to be considered?
No, President Rice.
Okay. Didn't think so. Just making sure. All right. So with that said, we will not be moving into closed session. This meeting is adjourned.